To the Black American States of America. The Institute of Liberty, Justice for Honor.
All right, David's gonna get a start here and make a couple of adjustments to the agenda.
Okay.
To validate.
I uh. I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with the change of uh the administrative update. Will come uh in front of uh Mr. Carroll's presentation. Second.
Any questions? Well, David.
I. I approve, I think, a motion we approved the minutes from the last board meeting.
Okay. Questions? David?
I.
Post? Go right to.
Administrative.
So administrative.
Yeah, so um as we've talked about um throughout this year, this is our first year implementing the strategic plan. So we did an update in September and we are now presenting our secondly quarterly update. So the administrative team is ready to go.
So there'll be a strategic plan update today. The agenda is goal review, progress update, and next step. How's that? Who's next? Casey's next.
Uh it disconnected. Okay, uh so we just wanted to update you on the four strategic planning goals that we have been working towards uh as a unit with uh the staff here of Geneseo as well as the community partners. Our first goal was focused on uh effective transitions for students and it's really anchored into uh transitions between buildings, but then effective transitions based on uh curriculum updates and opportunities for our students that are entering the district and then exiting the district as well.
So uh in my role as the administrator, we have a couple of different transitions that we do. Um so the state has guidance on uh transition within the IEP. So at fifteen uh and older um uh staff need to give transition assessments to uh all of our students that are classified. So sixth graders enough um have to have the transition assessment and the rest um fifteen and older have to have something of what they want to do post high school. It's really difficult for students with disabilities. It's really difficult for all students to think about as a freshman, what you want to do post high school. So um we have to report on something every year at the state level. Uh and this is the year that they're gonna pull our transition assessments, uh random IEPs next fall, or how we do the transition this year. Um also working with my fifth and sixth grade special ed teachers on the transition between elementary school and middle school. And I'm starting to facilitate some of those conversations as my fifth grade teacher has um her students' annual reviews. Um writing goals that will make sense as they go into middle school. So then my sixth grade teacher doesn't um, you know, look at those goals and say, how do I do this? So kind of facilitating those conversations. Um and then the big thing is the pre-K come K. So for students that are classified in the CPSE, uh preschool students as ages three through five, they have to end CPSE before they enter kindergarten. Uh so sometimes they are just declassified. They no longer need like a speech or OT or PT service. There are times where they are then referred to CSE, which means they will um uh they don't lose services. So they'll end CPSE and in the pre-K level and start services at the kindergarten level. Uh but we're having big team meetings about what that looks like. We have a lot of students that are receiving service at the CPSE um upwards of close to fifty at this point. Um so kind of seeing those kids, what their potential needs are when they come to us in kindergarten. Um all of those conversations are are happening at this point. Uh so hopefully we're better prepared for those incoming kindergarteners with needs. Transition piece.
Some other transitions that we're working on specifically is transition into our pre-K program that is currently in How's That Pride and Joy and uh building a curriculum uh at that youngest level that does provide a bridge for our students as they transition into our kindergarten practices. We're looking at some of the basic foundational assessments that are happening in kindergarten and the skills based on uh the science of reading uh initiative that is coming from the states and working with staff down at uh Pride and Joy to build a continuous curriculum that will support a strong transition for those kiddos. Another piece of this is the curriculum development, and I've been astounded with the amount of work that has been done in just the past several months. Uh last year, there was but two days where staff uh were relieved of of their work duties to support curriculum writing uh in the school day. And this year, we have eleven hundred hours of curriculum at a singular level. Uh so individual staff and the amount of time that they've done. We've produced over one hundred units across the district. Uh it's pretty powerful to see all of that work come together. Conversations have evolved beyond just curriculum, looking at data trends and specific changes in some of the regions that uh have come out of the social studies department. And they've been looking at how they can work with the ELA department to uh have common practices in both of those courses to help the kids feel more successful as they approach those regions. So it's pretty cool stuff happening. I do want to thank the principals and secretaries for their flexibility in supporting this work. Uh because our it's tough to get substitutes and on those days when curriculum is on the calendar, they work really hard to ensure that classrooms are supported, but also teachers feel like this work is prioritized. So uh the next slide is just a um on diagram that we utilized last time, just with a different goal, and I wanted us to continuously connect back to this because this is the work that we're doing with the strategic plan, and it's important that we uh anchor back into that the common vision and expectations, the practices and the language. Our next goal is focused in social emotional learning. We started the year with our character strong uh program as a support for culture and climate. And uh a layer of this was looking at the fidelity of implementation. So we our character strong coaches continue to work with classroom teachers to ensure that there is a fidelity of implementation from K twelve. We have our uh daily lessons happening down in elementary and then up through middle school and high school, they're getting a weekly dose of this in one of their content classes. Uh the administrative team has gone around and and explored some of this and engaged with it and it it's it's neat to see some of the feedback from the kids. So the next slide has some uh quotes, the next slide has some quotes from kids regarding uh their experience with the program. We have it happening in our English courses at the high school, at the middle school level is happening in science, and then in elementary it's happening in uh all the classrooms as part of their core instruction. We're looking at some emotional intelligence courses or programs as well because we recognize that outside of just building a culture and climate where kids feel safe and supported, we also need to help them recognize that it's okay to feel angry. The problem, what they're missing, though, aside of just knowing it's okay to feel angry, upset, or sad, or excited, is what do I do in that moment before I respond? So that's the next layer that we're gonna try to add in. Uh we have our counseling staff at the elementary building going through a training uh through Yale where they're uh learning the program, how it impacts adults, and then shifting it down to kiddos. A big layer of this was ensuring that we had increased PD for staff. Um so some opportunities that we've provided so far this year, we are working through a TCIS training with our mental health staff and some of the administration. We had twenty-four staff members participate in a five-hour virtual learning experience, guest speaker. Um that is pretty powerful to see staff on their own time kind of jumping in and unpacking that experience. We have some book studies coming up. We have eight um middle school and high school teachers going to play an SEL in a secondary school environment. I'm excited to see what they bring back from that. And on our conference day next week, we have uh the first portion of this experience with our middle school, high school staff, and in March, we'll have our second portion of it, uh brain architecture, where we have some uh staff from BOSI's coming in to work uh with our staff to look at how brains are built, how trauma and ACEs impact that, and the role that we play as teachers.
Uh let me just, before you jump into the next, I just gotta ask a question. So maybe from a format perspective, hit, everything you say sounds nice. I just, I don't know what it means in terms of progress.
Yeah.
Where are we in terms of achieving the goal that we set? Are we fifty percent of the way there? Are we hundred ninety percent? Where are we in terms of achieving the goal? The annual goals. Long term, I get it.
Yeah. So when we look at the uh, it is posted on the website where our last action steps have have landed us and where we aim to be at this next checkpoint, which was December thirtieth, I believe, is our last checkpoint. Curriculum and instruction, we did say that was going to be a five-year plan to have all of our curriculum written at a local level. This year, we're looking at at the middle school, high school, one course that we're teaching because it is, absolutely, yeah, yeah. So absolutely, we are tracking towards uh success towards that goal individually. We've checked off a lot of the boxes in the SEL piece, increased um PD around social emotional learning and uh emotional resilience and behavior management strategies. Uh Craig and Chrissy will talk about some specific action steps in their buildings that are also supporting this initiative. We have our character strong initiative taking place. So we've we've really checked off a lot of the boxes. Have we made some adjustments? Absolutely, that is the nature of the beast, but I feel pretty good about these two specifically, just because that's where I live.
Yeah, so in the middle school, high school, uh one thing we started this school year off with is just trying to get some consistency consistency and some expectations among staff. Um and really looking at um three core values of responsibility, respect, and safety amongst our students and staff. So uh we really highlighted that. Um there are signs in each of the classrooms. Uh teachers hope they're reviewing those and are reviewing those expectations of what it looks like in their in their um particular classrooms and things like that. Uh we were able to start a uh climate and culture committee um in the middle school, high school for staff. Uh we've only had one meeting. We had a second meeting scheduled a couple of weeks ago, but we had the whole early day. Um so it's pushed back to next week. Uh and we're really just looking at our our culture and our climate in our middle school, high school, um and looking at some feedback, um some of the survey results from Panorama, um and things like that, and how we can do a better job of improving that climate and culture.
And that's, I think you touched on it, right? That's that's important because, you know, in the in the ultimate question is how do you measure success? And and if there's a survey, if there's something definitive, quantitative, whatever, um that's, I think, helpful.
So we're looking at, so we'll be looking at uh some of those kinds of things and trying to come up with some strategies and some things uh that we can build into the middle school, high school to to improve the areas that we need to improve on. Um but like I said, we just kind of, we've had one meeting, we have another meeting coming up. And uh we'll continue to continue that work.
And at the elementary level, we, it's been nice because we're starting to work together. We do have a little bit of a um extra step ahead of the middle school, high school because PBIS or that positive behavioral intervention support, um the Go Blue focus has been underway for quite some time now. Um but what we're doing is trying to bring the PBIS um handbook, which was created last year. Um and kind of took together the the matrix of how to be safe, how to be respectful, how to be responsible, and created a handbook that we can all anchor into, and we're bringing that to life um by going around and visiting classrooms and.
Training that occurs with that manual?
Um so it outlines all the expectations for kids. So it's, what does it mean for kids?
Mm-hmm.
Um what does it mean to, like, how does developing grit impact responsibility? And so it's having those conversations. Um and what's, we talk about uh data. We took, um our committee took the SEL, the Panorama survey that was administered in December. And we took that data, looked at what are we doing really well with, and where do we need support? Yep, and that was in self-awareness, so understanding how your feelings are, how you manage those feelings, which have a direct impact on behavior. And then um how to stick to something that's really difficult. So this past month, we focused on grit, which happened to align with our character strong of perseverance. Um we had a school-wide uh focus to um there it was diagnostics, it was eye-ready testing and all that, and we're trying to get a little blue up to the top, the top of the hill, so that at our Go Blue Assembly on Friday, he made it to the top because of all the points that were grown. So it's tying together the fun that the kids love with purpose.
Yes.
Uh and data. So that's what it looked like at elementary level. Yes.
So with these new initiatives, um PBIS and and other things of that nature, there still has been significant incidents in the school where um there is one instance where a teacher was assaulted. Are we seeing an increase in that type of behavior with this model? Are we seeing a decrease? Is there a correlation? Can we identify a trend? Is there causality?
It takes seven, right? It's a shift in um helping to gain, anchor into values um throughout the school setting, both for teachers, for support staff, and for students. And that happened pretty early on on joining, and it was amazing because the school came together and there was, there was a lot of significant behavior that was happening. And so collectively, we created a crisis protocol so that helped, it had student, or it had teacher voice in there where when you call the office, if there's something where there's immediate danger, imminent danger, no matter who is in the office, we know exactly how to respond. And that would be a level three. A level two means it's not immediate, but you know, so-and-so is having a hard time right now. We need somebody to check in on them from the mental health team. Um so it could be myself, it could be a psychologist, it could be a counselor. Um a level one is we need maybe a consultation form, doesn't have to be urgent, doesn't have to be today, but we need a little bit of help. And so helping to identify that. And then the piece is what can the teachers expect from us? So what is, how are the kids, if they can return to the class, what will it look like? What can they expect from us? But there's also, it's outlined, when they can't go back, if they have a hard time regulating and they can't regulate, they're not ready to go back. Um and then we have steps that are outlined as to how to support the students and communicate that to families.
So would you say, like, as this is unfolding, would you say that the the teachers are feeling more supported through this process?
Um I feel as though that there's, there's they've had input and and uh feedback, both from surveys um that are anonymous, especially as I get to know them. Staff meetings, team meetings, and taking that with team leaders and trying to take that information, saying, how can we help support you so that you can be the best for your kids? Um so I do think that, you know, the more that we're able to, and the PBIS is not necessarily new, right? That's been a long round for, it's been around for a long time. It's just using that language more frequently so that we can have continuity from the elementary to the middle school to the high school.
Um I have a question with, is there a portion of the social emotional learning, um be it character strong or a component that goes with that, that supports staff and teachers and administrators? Like you kind of have to have a higher so um emotional IQ to help kids learn that. Is that a piece of what y'all are doing?
Yeah, so a part of goal two, if you want, is uh increased professional development in those areas. So our TCIS uh framework, um we have Ms. Amy Perez who's supporting doing a retraining in TCIS, uh therapeutic crisis intervention um as a layer of supports for uh a train team, but then also turning it over to uh staff at the elementary building to talk about all the things that you can do to control the environments, to control yourself before you even enter one of those situations. The first question you should be asking yourself is, how am I feeling? Right? Because when you walk into a situation and a and a kid is is struggling and you're, if you're not doing well, you're not gonna be able to open your toolbox and provide them everything they need. So that's gonna ha- uh Friday is gonna be the first dose with um our mental health team, and then it's gonna go into uh the elementary setting. Um holistically.
Yeah, the staff meeting um is held on superintendent conference day. So it's just exactly what you said. How can we, we're going back to the crisis protocol, looking at that, revising that. So the mental health team is doing that with the staff because again, what's working? What do we need to tweak? Um, do you feel supported? Um and then what happens in those situations when there is a crisis? Uh and what you could do to help control that a little bit more. So um our TCI trainer is going to be presenting strategies on the uh the stress model and then how to support the escalation um within the environment. So.
Also gonna be offering a couple of book studies in the spring, um co-hosted with a couple of staff members. One on uh it's called Permission to Feel, which is emotional intelligence, and uh it's connected to the uh the ruler platform, which is out of Yale, which some of our counseling team is learning currently. So the goal is to empower staff to understand that it's okay to have feelings. How do we walk into a situation where the kiddo, let them know it's okay? They call about, they talk about the meta moment, the space in between the emotion and the response. So what do we teach kids in that moment? How do we redirect them so that they uh are less empowered to uh make a choice that is going to make others unsafe, uh as well as a um uh educator self-care um book, book study uh using the text onward or upward.
With mindfulness.
Yeah, um there's a really cool app that a lot of us are trying right now called um How You Feel, and it checks in with you throughout the day. You have to say like, why am I feeling this way? And then it gives you a video right there to like help correct it. It's all about your energy and how you're feeling. So we're trying it with with pockets of adults and having great conversations with with uh mental health team about how we can then employ in the classroom, kids coming back from lunch, throwing it up on the board, having them check in. Their energy is so high, and we love high energy, but how do we come back tomorrow with a little bit less energy? It takes our four feelings of um our four color feelings, and it breaks it into over a hundred different emotions. Oftentimes, adults don't know what all those emotions are, so it's been fun for me to say, well, I'm actually, I have FOMO right now. That's one of the emotions, right? And what, how do we respond to that moment? So some opportunities, not overwhelming staff with more stuff because, but that is the stuff right now. So trying to trying to make it manageable, creative ways to approach it.
Which connects directly back to the survey of the the area that we performed, the lowest and maybe the most important is that self-awareness and self-management, which is that creating that pause between stimulus and response.
So I know this part might seem disjointed or disconnected because we talked about um goal three at our last meeting to to give um updates as far as where we were where we're at communication goal. But honestly, um tonight's meeting, I think, put some of those things that we were talking about right out in the in in the forefront. Um I think there there is um a saturation point of um just sending emails or electronic, and I I can't remember who said it, but it's not realistic that people are gonna be coming to our website to look, oh, is there a building project happening or or anything like that? So having those face-to-face meetings, those community forums is an important component of our of our uh uh communication goal. Um so can you just go to the next slide? So so the component that we talked about last time was having an updated communication plan, more targeted communication plan, but a a big component of that is where we are with Parents Square, and that's really why we wanted to kind of pull that piece out separately because we are moving forward with that. And we do think that's gonna be a game changer for both our our staff and our families. Interesting component of it that that did come up in our conversation tonight is, what if you're not connected to the school? I'm I'm not getting the linkages. There is an element of Parents Square where a a person, if they're interested, they could subscribe to that, they could download the Parents Square app, and they could get updates on on when the sporting events are, any component of it, without even being attached to our school. So I think there's going to be elements of that product um that will be helpful, but I I I'm always um hesitant to say, okay, the the key to success with our communication is buying product acts or anything like that. Having those face-to-face conversations, even if they are are challenging, I think you hear tho- those perspectives. So um I I think that rolling it out the way we're rolling it out, even though it's mid-year, having our conference day, I know you keep hearing about our conference day next week, but we're gonna have some some PD on that. And then um the following week, we're looking to go live with using that as our our primary communication tool. There's um embedded survey components that that are into it. We're just going to, you know, start getting our feet wet with it, you know, between, you know, the beginning of February and the rest of this year. But I I think it is timely, especially from some of the comments that came up from the 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 parent format um for uh forum. Um you've seen some of the updates to our 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 website um on the capital improvement project and some of the mental health resources, but um we we can't not look at those. Those are continual changes that we have to look at, and and honestly, I think we need to be open and well, uh you know, willing to hear criticisms, you know, and say, how can we get better with the?
So John, I'm I'm hearing loud and clear, there's a non-technical community.
Sure.
Yes.
Hundred percent, hundred percent.
And what's the plan for that portion of our population?
I personally would say more of what we saw tonight, you know, trying to get that that community in into the building. Um even even the printed uh copies that were going out in in linkages, I think there are, there's an element that does like having that, where where you have the um you know, put into the Penny Saver, so they're getting it all the time with those flyers. But when there's um either hot button issues or educational types of evenings that we can have in in the building, I I think that um people look for those moments right now. And I think even if it starts, this was obviously a big one tonight, we've had some where there's two people. Um starting small, but but building that capacity, I think we'll we'll start to grow organically, hopefully.
So right now, with the group that that isn't getting information, do they, do they get the linkages too, whether they have students that's a, a, you know, retired population that that they probably wouldn't want to use Parents Square because it's technology? Um they get linkages now, but.
Not the electronic version. So we did, um the year that we transitioned from the paper to um the electronic version, we did have um a piece on the back that said, if you would like, um you know, we're going electronic, if you would like to give us your email, we'll add it to the system. We had very few people um actually reach out. And um what's difficult for us, I was actually talking to a neighboring district, and they they use their Penny Saver. Uh when they, when they have an um an announcement, they they take out an ad. Um but they're guaranteed, every single one of the residents gets that flyer. Um we don't have currently a system where our, where our community would get every single, so part of our community is covered by the Genese Valley Penny Saver, some of our community is covered by the Mountmore Shopper, and then there's um seventy-two people in Canisius that share individually labels and mails um information to because they're not in either system or the every-door direct mailing of our district. I don't know why. Um we have tried throughout my tenure here to really improve that communication because they weren't. Um we did do it in the Penny Saver, and we got huge communication issues with that piece. So you know, we we are trying to address it. Um I don't know what the perfect answer is. You know, there is a significant cost if we do go back to paper linkages and mailing them.
Definitely open for, open to suggestions, open to ideas. We're going to reformulate that um strategic planning group that we have, you know, specifically um focused on commu- uh on communication as a goal, but um open to suggestions because it it is hard to he uh reach every topic, but I I definitely hear the people that are saying, I mean, myself, I I get inundated with emails, you know, from my own kids' schools and you know, things things fall through the cracks and I'm on technology all the time. So if you're not, you're 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 missing, you're missing important pieces of information without a doubt.
Goal four?
Goal four, so I get the unique opportunity to work with these great leaders, and I get to provide goals one, two, and three, make them come to life, providing a budget that's robust and academic as well as extracurricular opportunities. So that's really the goal that I have. Number two is, we tonight kind of went over, and we have some raw data of comparative school districts to kind of see our per-people expenditures, where we're at, and how we fare across the board, not only in Livingston County and GV BOSI's, but also in comparative districts. And then last, but certainly not least, uh and that work starts this Friday, the twenty-sixth, is gonna be our security efforts. And so we have a security meeting this this Friday, the twenty-sixth, and that's gonna continue the work and making sure that our students and staff are safe.
Okay, so the next step uh obviously is for board to develop some goals. Then we'll continue to implement the strategic plan, modify and adjust the plan as needed, and give you a quarterly update in April. First speaker.
Thank you.
I just, I really do want to commend the team. Um there isn't a day that that they're not putting out flyers and working very, very hard. And to continue to keep the strategic plan, the long-term planning in the forefront, the curriculum planning, the SEL planning, um that that is huge. And so this this team is working incredibly hard to to make that come to fruition, and and I'm extremely proud of them, so. Thanks, guys.
Thank you all. Anything else on that?
No, I think Scott's next. Yep.
Okay. So welcome everyone. For those that don't maybe know me over here, I I'm Scott Carroll, the new school business administrator, day ten, so. Hello. Nice to to see everyone.
How we doing?
We're doing all right. We're doing all right. So before uh I begin, I also have a few shout-outs. So um I gotta admit that Jen Rubek in the business office and and really Stephanie Hill, who is a treasure, lights out. Um Stephanie needs a huge shout-out, huge kudos. Um she has been absolutely tremendous, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention her name tonight. So I definitely want to make sure that I support her and shout out how great of a person she is. So kudos to Stephanie. So here is the plan, budget worksheets. I don't know where you guys want me. Sometimes I, I wander, so I apologize. So tonight obviously is going to be the expenditure budget. Okay? On February 5th, we're going to go over facilities and transportation on the 22nd or the 26th, excuse me. That's going to be the estimated revenues where we're currently at in current, in terms of how much money are we bringing in? Then we're going to go to March. That's going to be the first budget kind of draft preparation. And then we're going to go to May, or, or excuse me, to April. That's going to be where you guys finalize that. And then it's going to go to May for voter approval. Okay? So goal number one, we just kind of talked about that, but I think it's, it's imperative to really kind of go back through because our strategic plan is really our, our guiding light, right? We hitched that, that star to the wagon and that's really what, what shows us the way. So goal number one is going to be making sure that we enhance student learning by having students participate in high-quality instruction, right? Really, that's going to be in career, college, or military. All right? Goal number two is going to be making sure that we provide some sort of social emotional learning, right? We're providing that for students, for staff, as well as the community. Goal number three hits upon our strategic plan is that communication piece, right? So results-oriented, informative, transparent, high-quality communication. And then number four is again, my part where it's that robust, building a, a robust budget that's going to support academics as well as curriculum. So here's kind of the development process and really we kind of fostered some open communication. Some of this happened prior to me, but while we're here, I've sat down, some of it was definitely a reiteration. But I think, you know, Cindy, incorrect me if I'm wrong, I think the administrative crew really appreciated that. We were able to sit down, we're able to showcase really kind of line by line what their budget was. Miraculously, that never happened before. And so I think they appreciated where the current money was, what they had to spend it on, and just being transparent as, as much as we possibly can. We're also going to estimate the district aid and, as well as the district expenditures, and I'll do that right now. So here's kind of Geneseo at a glance, currently 851 students. K3 is a little less enrollment than the high school. And roughly, we have about 73 staff members, both at the K5 level, at the 612 level, and then we have five shared staff members. Okay? Here's the breakdown of what that looks like. So in the elementary, you have your classroom teachers and then you have your middle high school. Again, so 73 in the elementary, 73 at the 612 total, you have about, you know, 155, around that. So here, we're going to get into classified instructional salaries as well as instructional salaries. And so you're going to see that there is a blank here and I did that intentionally. Okay? Last year, our, our actual budget was 10.4 million dollars in classified and instruction. I feel like I'd be speaking out of church with two contracts that are currently in negotiations and projecting not knowing what those are. I, I don't really want to put a number out there and say, hey, Scott, you tied us to this. This is the number. This is what it's supposed to be. I will tell you it's going to be an increase. Okay? With the GFA, that's already in there. We have contractual bumps, longevity bumps. We know that that's going to be an increase, right? With the two ones that are currently there, the confidential managerial as well as the CSEA. Again, we know that there's going to be a bump. What that is, I don't necessarily know, but there will be an increase in this line. 10.4 to what? Again, I don't want to put a number on that currently at this time because I feel like I don't necessarily have a good handle on that because we're still in good spirit, in the spirit of negotiations. We're still in those negotiations. Okay?
Is the finance committee working on the range?
We, we discuss.
Okay, that's all I need. Yes.
Here is healthcare and the flash. So currently last year, you looked at 3.9 million. I have no idea because I've called flash. I haven't got an actual answer yet. So there hasn't been a delineation of what that actual increase is going to be. This currently right now is a 5% bump. Okay? So yeah, 3.9, 5% bump. We're going to go to 4.192. Again, this is just an expenditure. This is an estimate. It is not set in stone. 5% is what I do. Pension. Here are all your pensions. So the first one, employee retirement system, I did 15%, okay? If you look at teacher retirement system, I did point, I did 10.75, all right? And they're somewhat in that range. Workers comp, it went up five grand. You're going to have your social security Medicare. It's like 0.02165 remaining, of course, with the line. You get about $2,111 increase. Okay? And unemployment are going to keep flat. So again, these are all estimated expenditures. That's where we feel as though we're going to be. We're pretty confident. Anything I think gets hot. Here's our BOSIs and our special education. So you have your special ed instruction, 2.917. You heard Mr. Lehman talk about our CPSE, 50 students. Here's some of the things. So something happened last week that's ongoing, that could potentially be a residential placement. That's anywhere from a hundred thousand dollars to 150,000. You also have an increase in CTE with BOSIs and you also have individuals that are going outside of these walls to receive their education. So with those students leave our walls, sometimes there is an increased cost. Okay? Your BOSIs numbers here, you talk about the individual from campus who's like, please, if you guys have any individuals that want to become tradesmen or construction workers, you are seeing an increase currently in Geneseo and our students attending CTE at Wildwood. That is a plus, but with that, it's going to be an increased number. So right now it's 55. You're going to 62 next year. Okay?
Wildwood was.
Sorry, yeah, I apologize. Yeah, Wildwood would be TST. So I, I apologize. But you're going to see an increase here and that's because of the CTE increase, increase as well as the special education instruction. And again, I think that's just high-cost student needs coming in. We must make sure that we educate them. We may not have the resources here if they go outside these walls. And again, potentially budgeting for a residential, which can be anywhere from a hundred to 150,000 dollar student. Our debt service. So here's our current debt service and what we anticipate. That's going to be the bands on the buses. So it's last year's buses. And kind of the years previous, so it's like two buses in one. You'll see it in the new van. It just came out. But there's that, there's the garage, the bus garage. There's something else that I'm missing, but that's the debt service that we currently have. Next steps, I really think that I want to look at efficiencies. I really want to make sure that I touch base with you. I touch base with superintendent Flowers. I really touch base with our leaders. See, is there any way that we can become more efficient in what we currently have, whether that's staffing, just in general, how do we become more efficient? Tax cap calculator. Again, I kind of have an idea of what that's going to be. It's going to be roughly, and, and don't hold me to this, but like 3.1 to 3.3 tax gap. And then I feel like we really have to wait, right? We have to wait for our state adoption. We have to wait for expenditures of the actual budget to see what potentially could be some sort of fund balance that we could utilize. And here are some contingencies and I kind of talked about this, but you have emergency projects, check. We did that last year. Staff illness, maternity leaves. You're always going to have that, right? You're going to have individuals. That's an increase in subs. You're paying the staff as well as the sub that's coming in. Supports for social emotional learning. We're doing that, right? We're invested in that. That's something that we're going to continue. A student who named me more restricted placements, kind of talked about that a little bit. Programs for initiatives. We talked about character strong. We talked about parents square. Those are all things that we're doing to improve and hit upon our strategic plan. You have some homeless students. Last year, huge. We had students that we were sending all the way to Rochester because of McKinney event. So have to do that. We can stack those costs, but it's upfront money in the beginning. Don't get that until next year. And then also mechanical failure. And I'll throw that out there just because we had talked about when I met with transportation and the director of facilities, Aaron, who's doing a phenomenal job. They both are. One of the boilers potentially could, could go. When I asked for a quote, he's like, yeah, you're going to be at like 200 to 250,000 dollars for a new boiler. Again, that's just, we don't know. Those are unexpected expenditures that might necessarily come up. That's all I got. So current expenditures, this is where we are. Again, I don't really want to get into the weeds in terms of where we're at with the instructional salaries just because I, I don't want to hold you guys to that and, and have a number that might just be completely outrageous because again, we're currently in negotiations.
And I am near the line. Time, time to work with you. Yeah, I will. And I guess this is good. This is a good start for the, the annual operating budget, if you will. But I'm also looking to, we've talked about this periodically, to have a multi-year plan. Three years, five years, whatever it is, that kind of looks out. And I know it's always going to change. It's not cast in concrete by anybody, but give us some visibility. We know enough about some areas that we can begin to plan ahead. And that's, that's the intent of trying to strategic plan. Ultimately to align all of the goals, the, the ones we have plus others to that multi-year financial plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I would echo that. Yeah, 100%. I would echo that. And then, you know, John and I talked today, we talked about anywhere from a two to four-year plan in terms of technology. How we're doing that, how we're rolling that out, what are we purchasing? We talked earlier at the finance committee in regards to transportation. What's our transportation? What's our bus plan? What's that look like?
I mean, the asset management plan that we've talked about, the auditors have brought up, you know, that has a useful life. From that standpoint.
So I, I think we're, I, I'm taking it all in. I feel like I'm kind of drinking from a fire hose right now. And so, but yeah, I mean, keep bringing it to me. It's good. It's good. Keep bringing it to me and, uh, you know, I, I will kind of filter those out and I think, yeah, you're spot on. I think we're on the same page there. Thinking future, you know, four, five-year forecast, what that looks like. Okay?
Basically you have the course guides in front of you, the proposals for the course guide and basically what they are, some courses. We look to add, if you see All right. So basically what you'll find when you look, the, the courses that we're looking to add into the course guide. I want to remind you just because they're going into the course guide, doesn't mean they will be offered. We do sign up. So obviously student interest is one of the priorities for us to fund and also run a class that has the most possible student participation. The new courses fall underneath STEAM pretty nicely. You'll see one, emerging careers, and that talks about optics and, and Microsoft fundamentals, just some things that our, our students will need as they go on to career or college readiness. Genocide studies is just a little bit more rigorous course of our first genocide class. And there's been a lot of student interest. So that's the only one kind of outside that STEAM. But it is certainly a class this year that was pretty popular.
Genocide or genetics?
Genocide studies. Yes. And film and literature, that's a class Mr. Antadusi has put forward. And again, just a lot of the art, but also the technology, which is really nice again, students exposure to some classes that they may not have the opportunity to do elsewhere. And then an art in motion is another class that's definitely put up for this year for new courses. So why are we looking at the STEAM? Well, there's multiple reasons. One of the biggest reasons, obviously, you have probably read where New York State Regents exams may someday evaporate. And what would happen is that we look into different pathways. So you want to build your course guide where you have enough courses to meet certain pathways. So if it's a technology pathway, you want to make sure you have enough courses that students can enroll in to complete that. Many of our students in technology right now go to BOSIs to get that. Add in a few courses here and there. Eventually when the state gives us more direction as to how we roll out these pathways and what that's going to involve, we will be ahead of the game to be able to offer our students opportunities in various ones, whether it's art, technology, math, there's, there's all different types that you can look at. Questions. As always, thanks for your support.
So this is the, the high school and middle school, high school version. Do we, what are we doing earlier?
So right now.
In this.
This with the STEAM, since you're seeing what you're going to do. These are credit. Okay? So these courses are high school, basically. You're going to get some information this spring. We're working right now as a school-wide team leaders. Our teachers, we're gathering information. We're going to change our wheel a little bit at the middle school. Okay, we made some adjustments in the past where we had computer applications. Few years ago, we took that out. We wanted to try something new and found out, well, guess what? Some of our students are lacking those basic skills. So we have to look at getting that back into the, the wheel. Perfect opportunity because we don't offer the sampler anymore because we have kind of consolidated down to Spanish. So now we have 10 weeks at sixth grade. What are we going to put in there? And what we want to avoid is just filling in the time or 10 weeks without thoughtful discussion. What are our needs? And how is that going to best support our students to be successful? So it's been, we've had several meetings already and several more coming. Ideally, we'd like to have that today, but you can't rush that process because then you end up plugging in something that in a year, you're going back to take it out, re-plug it in.
Everybody has heard the question I ask more times. I like to make care to hear it. Is for our kindergartners, are we preparing them with the women? At every, at every grade level, you know, from the.
Questions?
I have questions, a couple of questions. First one's about foreign language. So I heard you say we're consolidating in Spanish. That's still contingent on teachers.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be challenging. We have some conversations with the college going on. We're hoping that their program that they have met with us on does take off. That would give some students in your fours and fives opportunities to take some courses down there.
And would that be with a live teacher?
Yes. And actually they would work with us in the schedule. Wouldn't just be Geneseo. It'd be regional schools as well. Rockport has done this for years and I, I think Geneseo is now interested in doing that as well, which would be a real big plus for multiple reasons. Students be able to enroll in a course. And you, as you know, most college courses are longer than the hour and they don't line up to everyone's bell schedule. So they can often first thing in the morning, then all the schools will be able to sign students that are interested in them.
Right. I have the benefit of working on both sides of that equation. Okay? So I'm also working down there on international business and languages in, in concert with the language department. So more to follow, not done yet.
Correct.
And would this be a situation where the students pay for that, pay for that course?
Yes, that's a little disadvantage of the programs. But they would get credit and then they would get reimbursed by the college if you go to SUNY Geneseo. So.
And we are looking at grants and donations. That's what we're looking at right now.
Either way, we're going to transition out and we explored this year with the Spanish academy. We're hoping we don't have to do that next year. I interview someone next week that hopefully will sign on board with us who's actually French and Spanish certified. But we'll see. Yeah. There's a lot of shopping going on. Yeah. We're not alone. The principal group has had several conversations because we have to, right now be at the point where we have to support one. There just aren't any.
Still planning on supporting those, those students enrolled in the French track?
Our goal is to transition them out. Yes. And I know we have a French teacher that's retiring, but there's always opportunity to bring people back on a part-time basis to transition our.
Person is expecting such a ask. So. And also heard that there, there was a possibility of, of the college with another type of program, college-related or possible, like specifically to SUNY Geneseo of a, of a possible program. Not sure.
There's, there's like a teacher apprenticeship. I don't know if that's what.
There's a, we've talked about a three, one, three. Is that what you?
Yeah.
Three here, one kind of both and then three at college. Is that, that's the purpose of that is that's the one that Mike was referring to.
Okay. So that's a, that's an exciting potential opportunity for our students here.
The dean at the school of business implemented that program when she was at SUNY Rockport. And don't quote me exactly, seven or eight school, high schools participated with it. And they found a variety of, of, of ways to fund it. In addition to meeting with Cindy and Mike, the dean has also met with all the principals and BOSIs.
Yeah, we, the principal group had her at a meeting. Actually, they brought up several people. It was a great meeting. They have a lot to work on with their end, which is normal. It's not as easy with all the logistics that go into it as it may appear. But I'm just thrilled the conversation is starting. And that's, that's pretty big because that's something that in the past really didn't happen. And we can get to that point where we have a. And we can get to that point where we have a great partnership with them. And students can graduate, as many of you know, several of your students went in the sophomore's couch. It was an opportunity. And that's big.
The last question I had was related to the FACS curriculum. It was my understanding that that's a statewide mandated curriculum. And how are we meeting that in this district?
So it is, you have to offer FACS if you don't have a CTE. We follow the CTE module, which is certain modules within the CTE that are teacher covers. And you're going to see, we're just way ahead of every other school. I just had a meeting. Because you think Spanish and French are tough? Try to find a FACS teacher. So it's CTE you'll see across the board, pretty much what everybody uses. And there's good choice in that. You can use different choices of what motto you want to use. We're lucky to get a teacher that could do that. So that's even bigger. That was part of it. Thank you for all your support. I know staff and students really appreciate it. Thank you.
So knowing that, you know, you were going to be here for the capital improvement presentation and that we had multiple presentation. My presentation is only about forty five minutes. Or I kept it short, knowing that we had all those other presentations. And, you know, I want to start with a celebration as well. You heard a parent say that I have a, I think she said second grade student, and they have yet to be in a gymnasium. These kids, this is the first time they have been able to have PE in a gymnasium. And they're loving it. Adults are happy. The kids are happy. I was, I was walking back to my office today and this little guy was drinking at the fountain and he's drinking, he's drinking, he's drinking. I said, are you okay? He goes, yeah, I just left the gym and we're playing four square and I ran and I ran. And I, because they were, they've been in a hallway, they've been in the mezzanine. That, you know, in the mezzanine, there's two classes. They, they don't have space to run. They don't have, you can't offer half the games that you want to do. So very happy that our staff and students are utilizing this space and having a blast. Yeah, that's Mr. Mix. On as Scott started the expenditure budget, we did get our state aid run. And, you know, last year, there was a lot of conversation about the governor fully funding the foundation aid formula. And it really sounds amazing on TV and when you hear it in the news. But it really, there's, there's a lot of things that are flawed with the foundation aid formula. This year, we are receiving, you know, right around two percent increase of two hundred and ten thousand in our foundation aid. When you get your stated runs, it does include other expense driven aids. But you really want to be cautious in depending on those because they're dependent on costs. You want to be very cautious on how you depend on those. When the foundation aid was created twenty seven years ago, there wasn't a tax cap in place. And so what whole purpose behind that foundation aid was if a wealthier district needed more money for revenue, they would go out and tax their community. But there's only been, I think, two or three years that this formula has been able to be fully funded. And we knew right from the beginning it was flawed. Then there was the gap elimination years. And if you were on the board, you remembered that we had state aid withdrawn. We were one of the districts where we fell in the middle. We weren't significantly harmed and we didn't significantly benefit from foundation aid. But there are, there are some districts last year that when they did fully fund the foundation aid, received millions increases. And I think you'd be shocked at the wealthy districts that received the significant increases. And some of the rural, more poverty driven districts didn't receive those increases. This year, you heard that she couldn't continue to fund at that same level. So we've always been told that save harmless, you will at least get what you had last year. In our region, out of the twenty two districts, we actually have a negative point four percent because we're having a decrease overall. Schools are actually receiving a decrease in state aid. And it's significant for some districts, it's half a million dollars. And they're small rural districts. I don't know how they will continue to to be in business. So Sunday or Saturday, I was at the legislative breakfast and that is what every single superintendent and board member who was there really just hit home was the, the state has to review this, this formula. It's not working. It pits districts against each other because like I said, there are some very clear winners and then there's some very clear losers. You know, I'm, I'm very concerned with Geneseo's increase of two hundred thousand when we saw just one expenditure of healthcare eats up that that increase from from the state. So where does the rest of our revenue come from? Certainly, it comes from our taxpayers. And so, you know, we have work to do in presenting that budget and and coming together with where our revenues are and where our expenditures will be. But just wanted to give you that, that initial forecast. Sorry, I had to give such a downer after seeing those kids playing in the gym. But also just wanted to remind everyone that we do have our auditorium, or excuse me, our capital improvement project vote just outside the auditorium next Tuesday, eight AM to eight PM. So tell everyone to come vote. Some other upcoming events, we have a half day on January twenty sixth. We are all county orchestra. January twenty ninth, our superintendent conference day. Part of that day is more of that SEL brain architect, every staff or half the staff members will go through that. We could have everyone trained at that one conference day. So the staff members that receive the training in January, the other half will get that training in March. So continuing with those SEL goals, as I said, our capital improvement project vote is next Tuesday. Any questions?
Not for me. Somebody, I guess.
I just got touched on a lot of what we covered. We did, we did review. I think Doug had started on that. Scott put it together for us. We just wanted to look at how other, how we compare with other districts in general line items, not not line by line, but sections of the budget. And I think a quick, and Scott had a number of comparisons, whether it be within BOSIs, different, you know, different ways to look. And I'd say the takeaway was that we're, nothing jumped out. We're not way, we're not the highest, we're not the lowest. There's some variation. So I don't think there was any, anything big that jumped out of there, but I think it's something we need to keep looking at. So that was part of our meeting. Then we also reviewed, which, you know, Scott mentioned will be in our next meeting. We looked at the kind of the initial run of transportation and buildings and grounds budgets and where we're, where we're going to lie on that. So I think that was, that was the most of it.
Good. Thanks. Are you meeting every meeting now, twice a month?
I think that's planned.
We had a policy meeting around last Tuesday. We reviewed eight, eight policies at that meeting. One is under viewed by, I believe, updates. And we'll get that back to the next meeting in February. We have nine policies assigned for the February meeting. So maintaining our objective of getting at least three sixty five percent, seventy percent of that. Thanks for the policy. So they're going very well. Thank you. Anything on G C D?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, under personnel, I'd like to make a motion. We approve item eight point zero two through eight point one one.
Any question on the personnel items? How are our standings? All right. All in favor? Any votes?
Under new business side, I'd like to make a motion. We approve items nine point zero two through nine point zero eight. Second?
Any questions on this? Curriculum guide, course draft.
This is nine, this is nine point, any question about nine point zero five? So I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So that's if we have available capacity. So we determine what our needs are first. And then it could be offered to this district.
We actually have, yes, but we actually have a student from that district here receiving special services.
So and and it could be terminated at any time based upon a myriad of factors. Yeah, I was just thinking out loud, like if we had, you know, high need students come into our district that we needed to service on site, would they take priority?
So that becomes a very tricky situation. Because if a student is being successful in that program, the CSE has then determined that that program is being, is the appropriate program. And if, if we said, oh, there's, you know, there's, the end is closed. The parents could then say, no, we're going to go to an impartial hearing. A state, what rule state would then come into effect. And until that hearing, which can take some time, is over, that that child is educated in that setting. So it's, it's more about just working with our, our families in that neighboring school and just being more collaborative in that process. But yes, could there be a potential that if we had a student from another district receiving special education services and a need came up, if that classroom is full, we would need to find another placement for our student. It could be something in our district, could be something in another neighboring district, but that could be an issue.
Any other questions? Hey, all in favor?
All right.
Any votes?
And last, under business office, I'd like to make a motion. We approve items ten point zero two through ten point zero five. Second?
Okay, when we're putting down the audit, the status, appropriations and pressure report. All in favor?
All right.
Any votes? So, okay.
Under executive session, I'd like to make a motion. We go into executive session. Discuss the employment history of two particular individuals and also matter of litigation.
And CSE account.
And CSE account.
Second?